Good afternoon, it is 5:30 PM. The special meeting by video conference during disaster due to COVID-19 of the Board of Trustees of San Elizario AST held this November 12, 2020 is now called to order. Mrs. Hakes, roll call please.
Please note that Ms. Marina Hernandez is here, Ms. Becky Romero, myself, Irene Hakes, and you, Sandra Licón.
Okay, thank you.
I am also present.
Ah, Ms. Michelle, where are you? No la veo. Okay, and Ms. Michelle García, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Hakes, thank you, Ms. García. Welcome, everyone. Okay, on March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a forum in attendance at this meeting by a telephone call and internet access. We are meeting by use of both telephone conference call, online access, and through use of an email link for questions. If a member of the public submitted written comments in advance, the board president or a member of the administration will read the comments into record before or during the board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide comments at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to the board adopt the procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have any questions about the suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787, or by email at tona@oag.texas.gov. If we may all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic of Canada, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Will now proceed with San Elizario AST mission. San Elizario AST mission is to graduate students with skills to meet the demands of a changing world by promoting student success as non-negotiable, channeling resources to match the learning needs of students, employ and retain quality staff. So at San Elizario is a proud, innovative, and academically superior district. Okay, proceed to item two, open forum. Ms. Christine, did anyone sign up for open forum?
Um, no, Ms. Licón, no one has signed up for open forum.
Thank you, Ms. Christine. Okay, will now proceed then to item three, new business board action items. Item 3A, discussion and possible action to end the board resolutions amended and approved on June 15, 2020 regarding the district's employee compensation plan during its emergency closure. Presenter, Mrs. Blanca Cruz, Human Resources Director, and Mrs. Priscilla De Mata, Legal
Good evening, Ms. Licón and board members. Dr. Mesa Chávez, I know Ms. Priscilla De Mata is gonna go ahead and cover the resolutions. I don't know if she's here, can you hear us first?
Yes, thank you, Blanca. Good evening, Board President, Board Members, and Dr. Mesa Chávez. I'm happy to join you tonight and also sad for Ms. Hakes's departure, which we'll get to later. But before then, we bring to you an action item. We're recommending that the board resolution you previously approved in June be terminated, basically be provided an end date. You approved back in June, provided for idle pay and covered any employees who were being asked not to report to work due to the district's emergency closure. And also as you prepared for your, for this coming school year, so this allowed you to continue operations and to bring some peace of mind to your employees so that they would not lose out on, on pay during that time. Now from then, June until November 9, the district has since opened up its campuses. You're basically out of that transition period that the TEA approved for you all. And so now that you're beyond that transition period, you're now in a, in a different phase. And what the district has implemented is a modified work schedule. This is gonna allow employee schedules to be staggered and basically help with preventing further community spread of COVID-19 in your schools and, and in your offices. And so this is a great measure to, to help fight the COVID surge of cases. So anyway, this first action item is being proposed so that we can end that previous resolution. The next item is going to propose a new resolution for your consideration. And that's going to basically cover any idle employees who are asked to stay home because they cannot telework, such as maybe food service workers, custodians, et cetera. So for this first item, we're simply asking the board consider ending your resolution dated June 15 of 2020.
Do we have any questions? The floor is open for discussion.
No.
We don't have any questions, may entertain a motion, please?
And move. We approve item A as presented.
We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Hakes to approve the item as presented seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Ms. Hakes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. García?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Ms. Licón, aye, motion carries. Thank you. Proceed to item 3B, discussion and possible action to approve a board resolution regarding the district's employee compensation plan during the modified work schedule period amid continuing concerns of community spread during the COVID-19 pandemic. Presenter, Mrs. Blanca Cruz, Human Resources Director, and Ms. Priscilla De Mata, Legal
Good evening, Board President, Board Members, and Dr. Mesa Chávez. As I explained during the previous item, this new resolution is being presented to you for your consideration and is basically gonna cover any idle employees that are asked to stay home during this modified work schedule period. And so this is specifically for any employees who cannot, because of the nature of their work, telework or work remotely. So this new resolution, if you'll notice on the last page, let me bring it up, I'm sorry, on the third page, would become effective November 9, 2020. This coincides with the end of your transition period that was previously approved by you all as a board and then also approved by TEA. So this resolution would cover any idle work for employees who cannot telework beginning November 9, 2020, and basically continuing until you all take action to end idle pay under this new resolution. Are there any questions?
No.
The floor is open for discussion. Anyone have any questions? If not, may then I entertain a motion, please?
I move that we approve item two. Is it two? I'm sorry, I scrolled away.
3B.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve item 3B as presented?
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Hakes to approve item 3B, seconded by Ms. Romero. Ms. Hakes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. García?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Ms. Licón, aye, motion carries. Thank you. We will proceed now to item 3C, discussion and possible action to accept the resignation of SEISD Board Trustee, Mrs. Irene Hakes, presenter of Board of Trustees. And with this one, it is with great honor and excitement for Mrs. Hakes that she is our newly elected alter person placed four for the city of San Elizario. So congratulations on that, Mrs. Hakes. And with, I wasn't gonna cry, but it's bittersweet because, you know, we, yes, congratulations, corazón, you've been with our district for, well, as a board trustee for 14-plus years, almost 15, and throughout those years, you have seen many great things happen in our district. You've always aligned yourself with whatever trustees came in and left and left their little footprint. And you have been like a constant. And when I came on board, you literally took me under your wing, did what a true leader does, help those around you grow and feel comfortable in our spaces and to be great advocates. And I have to thank you for that because like a true leader, you have grown many of us. You've aligned yourself with us and, and made sure that we continue doing what we needed to do to serve our students, our teachers, our community. I'm very excited for our city because just like you did great things in our district, now you're in another political realm and in another platform to continue doing great things for our community as a whole in San Elizario. So with that, I'm very, very excited and I know we are in great hands. Will you be missed dearly? I'm just so grateful, we're wonderful friends and, and I thank you for that and I thank you for what you have truly done for our district. Like I said, I know you're gonna continue doing great things in, in San Elizario, so we're still at a win-win i- in our community. And like you did say, you are definitely your father's daughter. Having met your father, corazón, over 32 years ago, and seeing the passion and compassion that he had for his people and for, for the city of San Elizario, I've always said I've seen that in you. I see not only in your mannerisms, but I see a lot of your daddy in you, corazón, and I know that we are in great hands and we will continue to be in great hands as a whole. So I wish you nothing but luck and I thank you for all the wonderful years of service. From the bottom of my heart, I thank you so very much for your wisdom and your guidance and for your advocacy for our students and our educational system. Continued success, Irene, and thank you, thank you for just being the wonderful human being that you are.
Thank you, Sandra.
I wanna cry. I wanna say, congratulations, Irene. I echo the same sentiment that Mrs. Licón just, just said and, you know, you will be very, very missed and I wanna thank you because like Mrs. Licón said, you were very welcoming to myself and the other board members that came on. You take us under your wing, you, I know, I'm just gonna keep it short because then I'm gonna start to cry, but congratulations again and I know that the city of San Elizario is in good hands.
Thank you so much, thank you for your support. I appreciate that a lot.
Irene, this is Ms. García. I'm not on camera today, but I'm here. I just wanna thank you for all the encouragement you've given me throughout the years. Our friendship, I know, extends past the board and beyond, but I wanna thank you for encouraging me to run for this position. It was one of the best decisions that I could have ever made and working alongside of you, it's been awesome. You have helped us a lot and taken us, you know, under your wing as Ms. Licón said and I, I just appreciate that, thank you so much and congratulations, even though we knew you could do it. It was yours, it was in the bag. But congratulations on your new endeavor and keep in touch.
Thank you, thank you all for your kind words. I hope I don't let you down. No, I'm gonna work hard. I expect some cooperation from the community, so hopefully we can move forward.
Congratulations, Irene, this is Becky, and I'm very proud of you. And I can say you are definitely your father's daughter and I'm very happy because I had him as a teacher and I knew him personally, so I know where you're headed. And I'm very proud, very proud of you and I wanna thank you very dearly for all you've done for me personally as being an example. And I'm gonna cry.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. Thank you, thank you, Becky. Pos hay weenda?
Nomás puede ser mucho.
Thank you.
Ms. Jaquez, on behalf of, you know, all the employees in the San Elizario Independent School District, as well as myself, just thankful for the opportunity to work alongside you. I wish you the best of luck. I know you're just going down the street, but your guidance when I first arrived to San Elizario, just thank you for helping me hold steady. And, you know, I, I am thankful for the history that you helped me appreciate when I arrived to San Elizario and for sharing your knowledge. And so I'm gonna stop because then I'm going to get emotional. So I'm gonna take a deep breath. But I can tell you from the superintendent's perspective, I couldn't be thankful that you allowed me to lead with the experience I came in. And, and then you supported when you, when you felt you needed to. And so I absolutely appreciate that. And so I wish you good luck. And we're just down the street and I, I hope that we continue our partnership that we've already established with the city. And let's help our community in San Elizario keep moving forward. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, thank you. I'm trying not to. I think the district is in good hands and I feel very confident as I'm moving on to something else and the new challenge that things are gonna keep going and keep going strong and in the right direction. And I'm still around, so anything that I can help with, I'll be here.
Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you, I was trying to unmute myself. Sorry, technology stresses me so much. Thank you, thank you again, Irene. Thank you very much for all these years. And, and we're excited for you. We really are excited for, for you and, and this new, new journey life takes you on. Because I often say we get called upon, you know, to do other things when we're needed, where exactly we need to be. So this is your new calling. And we're excited, we're excited for you. So with that said, with a heavy heart, I would need a motion on the floor to accept Mrs. Jaquez's resignation. Letter, letter of resignation, please.
Do I make the motion?
I saw move to accept the resignation of Ms. Irene Jaquez.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the letter of resignation by Mrs. Jaquez from Mrs. García, seconded by Mrs. Hernandez. Mrs. Jaquez, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. García?
Aye.
Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Ms. Licón, aye, motion carries. But you go on to, you continue doing great things, Irene. You continue to do great things. So with a heart, everybody give her a little heart. We love you and continue, much success, Irene, much success.
Ailas espero que me anden ayudando también.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you very much. So now it's accepted. May I have a motion to adjourn at 5:50?
I make a motion to adjourn at 5:50 PM.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Romero, seconded, I believe it was Ms. García. Ms. Jaquez?
Aye.
Ms. García? Ms. García?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Hernandez?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
And Ms. Licón?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Irene. Our last board meeting.
I'm not disappearing, so.
No, I know you're not. I know you're not. We're just so used to having you looking over and seeing you there. And even virtually now, i- it's just gonna take adjusting. But, you know, I'm excited, I'm excited. Excited for, for our community. So no, no, I, beautiful, beautiful thoughts, yes.
Thank you.
We love you. But we can't be selfish.
Yes, yes. Absolutely. I would just be a little bit, just a little bit.
Whenever I need, I'm gonna be calling up and saying, hey.
You got it.
Ms. Jaquez, this is Ms. Jax. I just appreciate you the best. I'm excited for you. After 20, being here 20 years and not seeing you on the board anymore, it's gonna be very different. I just wanted to tell you thank you for everything that you've given to me over the last 20 years. So congratulations, good luck.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, so that... It concludes.